Hi, uh, what we want to call the budget session for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five for. Uh, I don't know Anthony, did you see another council person? I know, uh, Ross asked to get on. Uh, Lois is out of town. She asked to get on and then, uh, Councilwoman Lauren Antonis King was asking. She's feeling underwhelmed, but we got paid up for to continue.
What about your name?
And really, she's out of town this week.
The only people I have that are going so far are just us and, uh, we have like the gentleman from, uh.
Okay.
Calling Phil Rosovich.
Hello.
Hey Bill.
Hey.
I got you on the Polycon Loud, so we gonna go ahead and, uh, call the meeting. We got Councilman Roger.
I'll put on mute because I need to talk.
Okay, sounds good. We got you. So right now, uh, Ms. Wicks, we do have Ross, Wilson, Rock and the mayor, uh, for the forum. So now, uh, Department Head Presentations, we can now, uh, hear from traffic. We, where, where are we?
Forty-three on the log and twenty-eight on the shore. And Kyle was supposed to keep up y'all's stuff, so if you don't have.
Yeah.
It's not the same thing.
We're starting out with a traffic control building the grounds, Jermaine. They're all one department.
I mean, uh, Ross, I mean, uh, let's go with Brandon real quick to get Brandon out.
Sir.
Let's go to Brandon, get Brandon out here. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Brandon, let's go, let's get Brandon out.
Ninety-one and seventy-seven.
How y'all doing today? Okay. I don't think, uh, everything stayed the same except for an increase in my postage.
Ninety-one, eighty-nine.
Ninety-one.
But increasing my, my postage.
What you going to, Rick?
Forty-seven.
That's what you going to?
Yes, it was forty-two. That's all I have.
All right, maintenance contracts went up, Steve. You see that? Maintenance contracts and rent department went up.
Yeah, remember you got new meters coming in.
That's right. Okay, got it. Outside it is, I think it was Washington Department, uh, it's level.
We budgeted for have all six people up in the salary part. I mean, I mean, we're doing there right now, but we got a budget.
And we may need to look for more than postage because it keeps going up.
Yeah, you're right, Ms. Wicks is going up right quick.
She's loud for a good reason.
Ms. Hawkins, we doing, uh, water utility right now, and so we on page ninety-one and all the things, uh, YouTube, Ross, Brandon's increasing his postage. And I think about the whole process, or like what I would say, but with that being said, uh, she did add, uh, more, uh, well, the fully staffed department. Uh, and so how many slots would that be, uh, with the water meter, water meter?
With the meter, uh, I had, I had six men, but down to four, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Right.
Four, five, six.
Six in there, yeah. For hope that she'll be fully staffed.
Yeah.
You talking right now?
Yes, sir.
We'll be doing something about it if I know we climb, take a ride.
Yeah, but they, they, with them, with them putting them new meters in, they're, they're gonna go faster. It, it's not gonna take them that much to.
We want, we want to leave six with new meters. We don't need one or two.
Yeah.
That's our last.
Yeah.
So what I'm really be hiding about it now, that we can make it. It's gonna take all year to get these meters.
We gotta run out, we gotta run out, we have to run out. You're gonna need these five.
Yeah, they run out.
And I was trying to say, with our turnover, maybe you don't hire the other two, because somebody's done it.
That's true. That's true.
And they're not putting as many meters in as they thought they were going to, so it's gonna take a longer period of time. Don't you think, Rick?
He told, right, he just told me, uh, when he brought me some meters, uh, just while ago to put down. Because when they get into a house, if it's only, they say vacant or resident, they pull in the meter, but they're not going back with it. And so we, they did that and we didn't get, two customers came in, uh, need a meter now. So he brought me some meters to put down, but I got to email that to the lady there, Shonda, Shannon. Uh, meter number and stuff, the address they, where they went to, because it's in it, it's in it both.
Do you have what you need to read?
No, we're not, just reading.
They just, they just put them in.
We're not using the new system yet. They're just reading the.
So you replacing, these are not making a difference in the ones.
Not until, not until they're all in, will they start.
And they're gonna have three computers to read those, reading them, right?
Yeah, my understanding, we got three to put in the trucks.
Laptop.
Three laptops.
Then I don't understand, if you're putting in meters now and it's gonna take a year to put a meter in, are you saying it'll be a year before you begin to read?
No.
How are they reading the?
No, no, they still have manuals, they still have a manual.
Needed a read at the top, just like.
That's why I was asking, you have something.
To read.
Yes, oh, yeah, they still read the manual and put them in. They still use, they spot.
That's a good, that's a good question Ms. Wicks is asking though, and I know Wilson's gonna tap on it. Uh, bring Councilwoman Wilson.
To help out, to help out, why is that we can't start on a cycle once we get a cycle in? We can't start with the new, new device and new reading? Why we gotta wait till a year if, if, when they, once they complete a cycle? And which my thing, I, I think they should have started, if we could have did it that way, we should have started on a larger cycle for us. And, uh, that way less the men gotta worry about trying to read. Do we have to wait a year to start to put the new, whole new program in?
No, uh, my understanding was that we're gonna put the meters down first and then they're gonna come with the, the new software.
But, but why, why, why we gotta do that?
I think it'd be best, I, I think it would be best for us to put the meters down first and then come with the, the new software.
I think.
Because we got to be, because once they put it in, you got, they got to be trained, you know, everything has got to come in. But to show, they got to show me how to download all this stuff and then with the computers, uh, they got, the laptops got to be put in, in the trucks. For to pull these readings in.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't see it wrong with having one truck already ready with laptop and with the system up and going. You may need to hire one or two people to catch up, to keep up with, but then they wouldn't have to hire no more. If you, if we could start on the, no, wait a year. I mean, that's just me now.
Uh, it's, it's worth checking into, seeing why we can do, can we do it, or why we can't do it.
We're going to check into it.
Going back to Wilson and Rock when they were in that meeting, it gives us a trial run or a test, if you will, of seeing how it's working. So we can correct anything in that population before the whole population can, I think it's a great idea.
And that before, before the meter really leave out, we have up and running, we know what's going on.
I think what you gonna run into is, is back to what you said in terms of, uh, a cycle, they not gonna, the way they're installing, not gonna be like per cycle. You'll have some here, some there, some there.
They, they, they join them in cycle.
They gonna do, they gonna, they gonna install.
They install.
On cycle first.
Yeah, they install, right now, they installing in cycle two, plus getting all the schools out the way, the schools and the head start out the way. They done started that, but they are in cycle two and when they, yeah.
Just checking that.
Okay, I can get checked in.
Why not?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, Mayor, can you hear me?
Traffic and building grounds is the same.
Okay, good morning, everyone.
Morning, we got you, Councilwoman Hawkins.
Okay, then, all right.
Forty-three long, twenty-eight short, start Jermaine. That's where building the grounds is.
Give me where you're at. Yeah, now me, me and Steve already did the numbers on it, but something I want to mention, it may not be the right time to mention, but something I want to mention that has transpired since the time we did the budget up until now. Traffic, even though traffic and building the grounds is all combined in one department, but in my head, traffic is still, you know, a four man department. In traffic, I think that the people in traffic make like ten dollars and some cent an hour. It's a four man department. Everybody quit except supervisors because of salary. So I'm just putting that out front so that you'll know that. That department starts at, they, they start at ten dollars and fifty-four cent an hour. So I'm just telling you that.
I understand. And so right now, as the Saturday night, we are budgeting for those spots, right?
We are budgeting for those spots.
All right, so we're gonna do it, yes, we can go on.
What, over what period of time was that?
Uh, that all of them quit, um, month and a half.
Recently?
Yeah.
And so now.
The last one, the last day is on the second, so this last day is on the second of, of August. So the only one really that's left is Andre. We did hire a new guy, we'll be trying to train him, but I'm just.
All of those traffic guys have come in, one by one, the mayor's office, some eight times a week. To talk about Saturdays and say, this is the time that we're getting the budget, but we consider it, but it's nothing we can do, I mean, that's just what I have.
I mean, you know, and some of them, and I'm not just picking on one franchise, but you know, some of them, they come in, they say, well, they can go work at Chief L A in a controlled environment. And not have the responsibility that they have for three or four dollars an hour more. But I'm just, this, since we were in budget and it just happened, I want to put it out there just so you're about to be aware of it.
Okay, all right, now we got those slots.
Those other three slots are budgeted, one of them will fill, but I may have to put on the doctor for the next council meeting to fill the other two.
Hey, Mayor, I, I have a question for, for Jermaine.
Go ahead.
All right, so Jermaine, when you talk about giving raises to, uh, people wanting more money, I mean, they all can't be doing the same exact work, correct?
No, in the traffic department, they're responsible for the traffic signals, um, signs, striping, work zones, um, block parties, you know, all of that.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about talent flow. I mean, somebody's gotta be better than the other one. I, and I still struggle, and I know the municipality and all that. I struggle giving a raise across the board if some guy's sitting in the truck and the other guy's doing all the work. So, I mean, I always leave it up to the, to you or whoever's the department head to give us a suggestion, but I know that puts you in a bad position. But I think we'd have to be better off giving the people that are more qualified to work, that work harder, a little bump. And, and tell the other one, this, you know what, until you stuff your job up, you're not gonna get that.
Oh, I, I agree.
That way up, is that way off base?
No, I agree with you a hundred percent on that. I mean, you know, I, I believe that if you give everybody the same amount of money, there's nothing there to motivate the other guy to come up. You, you, it has to be done like that. And, and back some years ago, I don't know, Ms. Wicks, you remember when they did that, that one time where it was, uh, where we, it was, no, when we did the evaluations and you got between a one and three percent raise? And that was all depending up on your, your, your work history. If you were disciplining that twelve month period time, you couldn't get it. No, uh-uh, it happened under, 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 I think it was, it was Heather, it happened under her. Where if you, if you were suspended, different stuff, it was, it kicked it out.
Go ahead, I'm listening.
Yeah, okay, all right, you talking about merit, merit, you know, merit, uh, increase versus across the board.
Yeah, but I just wanted to put it out, what happened in that department since we were talking about that department.
And that just recently happened, now we appreciate that now.
And even the other day when I talked to Calipster and Souths.
Yeah.
All right, we going, gonna go to the spotlight now.
Okay.
Everything is, uh, basically the same, uh.
Some, Steve and I went out.
Check is up, but it's, you know, it's a several thousand dollars. Uh, it came down to just. Street traffic like light items, which, you know, the big area increase is up there when we budgeted all, all his people up in the salary area, that's the big increase area. And, uh, his, his fleet cost has come down, you know, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, so, and a lot of it, it's other than personnel. Your increases in personnel benefits, that's where the increase is for buildings and grounds.
Yeah, the, uh, linen, you see the linen, uh, fee went up from fifty to seven five thousand.
That's because that's what he spent in that area.
He's, he's spent that there now.
Yeah, he's gonna hit that number. The problem is, and he said he was gonna give a brick, I'm sure he did, because you're so efficient, but. They got some of these, they're not putting some things in the right places. So when he and I sat down and went through all these.
Some of them were corrected, and then this year it was still some other stuff.
But there's linens and uniforms and stuff, or.
I, I mentioned your suggestion when you.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, because in building the grounds and traffic, um, there's probably one person in both of those departments that actually bring their uniforms in. And for the uniform company to clean them, and that's a expense that, you know, you, you pay there every time. And when the uniform companies came, the guy, I don't remember his name, but he said, we can change that and control that. Now, in those two departments, I would be in favor of them getting six uniforms, uh, five or six uniforms in doing away. And I've already talked to them and told them that that's what I was gonna talk about and, and let them be responsible for washing their own uniforms. And then that helps with the, because you're reducing it from eleven down to six and then you're taking the cleaning part of it away and then, uh. So, but that's what, I would, those two departments, it would work for, uh, I, and I really strongly think that it would work for sanitation too. The only department that I have that I wouldn't really want to do that in is water sewers because they're in sewer. I wouldn't want them, put them in a situation where they have to take that home. Well, on a case like that, if we do that, if we move from eleven to six. If we move from eleven to six and no, no, and no cleaning, what will we have to do? Would we have to bid this out again or try to get the best, right?
It was bid, you all never made a decision on previous bid, we were gonna come back to a finance committee meeting. I've been waiting on you all to say the day, those three vendors keep contacting me, asking when it's the next meeting. Because it wasn't applesack, you all want to see a spread sheet with those per unit costs from each vendor. So we got that, Steve, and I just got to put that spread sheet together.
We need to do that before we can better signal, we don't.
Yeah, but I think what we can do.
And what happened with the species, he's talking about, whatever company you go with, you're just gonna drop them, so it's, you're still comparing apples to apples, you're just gonna reduce your cost.
So if we can get that sheet, I don't think we need to call them back. The council just didn't make a decision. Once we make that decision, then we wouldn't let, at that point in time, bring the departments in. It's a great suggestion from Jermaine to say, this is what we're asking from your company. Uh, and this is what we want and what that looks like.
Well, then you may have to ask, is there some type of reduced quantity that you're not gonna, uh, discount that thing, you know, if I'm gonna run more, because reduce cost. That would be something that.
And the guy from Santos, he was, he did say that if we could take the, the cleaning fee off, that's what we wanted to do, but I don't know, I don't.
I don't know if they're marketed or not.
Yeah, I don't know if they're, they're reaching that or not.
Okay, we'll just give them a sheet.
This could be written because if they get torn or something like that, then they, they still, under the lease agreement, they still replace it.
We still left it in our speed. Well, you ran two uniforms, they ran every week on us and they got the same uniform at the house.
But then every time you have a new employee.
Yes.
You're talking about something that's supposed to.
That's right.
And so anyhow, we get other things besides.
Yeah, the medical box and all that, it's, we're in the max.
I mean, we, we.
We need to reduce that max down because they, they, that will's gotta exist.
So anything else regarding traffic?
Building the grounds also, you're in.
All right, anything regarding building grounds? So now we go to water maintenance.
Ninety-six on the log and eighty on the shore.
Here I go again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say what I. How I feel.
I understand, I understand.
And you know, I look back at you, but, and the biggest change that I want to make, and it's not on the budget, but the biggest change that I do want to make in, in water sewer maintenance. Is everybody, you know, we've been dealing with, with Mancheck City and having people that work for the city to be able to step into roles. And I do have a man, and you know, it's kind of hard to have a man that's making a lower salary, trained for another salary. But I do wanna, I do wanna move a guy into a, uh, leadership role into, in the, to bag up Freddie. And to, so that when Freddie moves out, he can see the transition into it and he'll be on the city side. So I talked to Steve about that and I think that's something that we need. It was, it's always been a division chief position in that department, and I think that it needs to be filled. And I have a man that's, that he has already started to do it, and I mean, he started it. And I told him that I was gonna present it here, that I could make the promises, but it does need to be filled. That's the only way that we gonna start having people, you know, having some kind of transitional chart if we don't, if, if we don't do it. You know what you're facing.
Freddie's position.
Freddie is, he's, he's over the water sewer department, you know, he reading, reads the, the water map, yeah, he reads it. He does all of that, but he doesn't move wagons. And I, but I need this man to go into that position to go ahead and keep on learning what he's wanting under Freddie so that, you know. Not, not quitting Freddie out, but you know, but everybody getting older, he's one of them that's getting old, and I need to, need to have that.
In, in, in the, in the personnel services right now, we got all the slots budgeted.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's true.
A typical request you'd ask is not in this personnel, that's what, that's what.
You don't have the money, but you should jump in the hole with.
Well, I'm, I'm getting ready to go into that one now, Steve. And then that, that particular line item that we're talking about now is budgeted, but it's, it's. You have the positions there, but they're just not, the money is not there in those positions.
And you want to talk about the guy in the trench box?
Yeah, now, the next thing that I do want to do is to go and rate for operators who can operate a trench box. Big and, and operator trench box is between twenty and twenty-five hours an hour. Now, what that does, when we contact, uh, Dunn there and Hefield and some of the others, when we get into point repairs that are nine feet and beyond. We have to call them in and they do it for us. And most of those tickets are between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars. You hear that?
Sure.
If we got a operator and, and specify that this operator has to know how to use a trench box, and I talked to several people who, who know this line of work that, that are operators, and this is the price point for it. According to Steve's math, uh, math, once that operator has assisted with two or three complaints, he's already paid his salary for it. And right now, when we get to, I really don't like going deeper than six feet, because when you get past six feet, you're ready to use trench box and hold it. And every operator can operate with a trench box. Now, this wouldn't stop if we had an emergency repair, if we had to lay a couple hundred feet of pipe. You know, it'd be hard to put our guys off and do that, but it will stop us from having to call the contractor every time we get something over six feet.
At least basic floor repairs, right?
Yeah.
Ten feet down.
Yeah.
How many of those you think you, you're gonna do?
Well, I mean, this year, so far this year, we've probably done ten of them.
That's a hundred thousand dollars probably.
Yeah, and, and. What I'm willing to do in that is, I have a position that's vacant, but it's, it's just a laborer position. And if we can take that position and turn it into an operating position with this pay, then that will, that will kind of, that will save us a lot of money as far as what we're spending on point repairs right now.
So you got somebody in mind?
Well, I, I've had several people from Dunn Baron to approach me about it. That were, you know, I had one a couple of months ago, I've had two a couple of months ago who were, who were ready whenever I was ready, but, you know.
Oh.
I didn't have the money for it.
Would relocate.
Yes, they, right now, they live in Louisiana, this, this, both of the two that I talked to live in Louisiana, but both of them were willing to relocate. I mean, salary wise, plus some of the other benefits that we offer as far as, you know, holidays and that kind of stuff. But on the, in the long run, that would, that would save us. Both of them would really save us because if Freddie moved out or when he moved out, you got somebody in. And a man that's, that's gonna take his place, has been here ten years, so he's still got another fifteen before he's eligible for retirement.
So Steve, is this budgeting personnel services right now?
We don't have that new guy because we didn't change any personnel lineups. It's just something that's attractive, y'all. I mean, you'd be saving money now on a different line item if you put this guy up there, you know.
All right, so what line item, you know, he comes.
I saw the mayor, six thirty-five.
Yeah, six thirty-five. Six thirty-five right now, uh, what's the actual, because we went from four hundred thousand, six hundred, what's the actual with six thirty-five right now in this department?
Fifty-five.
Five hundred fifty-five thousand?
No, I'm in the wrong department, I'm sorry. I just, building the grounds.
Because this is probably where you have those two emergency points.
Yeah, they will come to one on highway, one will come, living in the one on, on Mobier, you know.
Those two combined will go five hundred thousand, but.
But you know, some of those other speakers that you were saying was in there.
We're at three hundred and thirty-two thousand, get your four hundred thousand on a budget through nine months.
How much, Steve?
We're at three hundred and thirty-two thousand. We're at three hundred thirty-two thousand and gets a four thousand dollar budget after nine months. You're gonna break the budget on that lineup.
Yes, you are, because we don't have a pay request on one of those yet.
Yeah, we got a couple babies out there.
So we're gonna break the four hundred thousand, and question now you, with salary and benefits, uh, what's the opportunity cost in getting a person to do this in-house versus two hundred thousand dollars? And what would we cut in house master repairs? Because if we're gonna move something up in personnel services, surely, we don't need to budget the six hundred, it's not gonna be both, that's what I'm saying.
What you gonna, what you gonna budget for the new land?
Yeah.
It, it's a position you already have, you just increased.
Yes.
How much is the increase gonna be?
Um, I think that one, I think that, that labor was at eleven fifty.
And you're asking for how much?
Between twenty and twenty-five.
So you're talking worst case scenario, it'd be fourteen more dollars, right?
Yeah, with the trench box, right?
That's the trench box, that's the guy with the trench box. Now, the other one.
It'd be about fifty-two thousand dollars more.
So if we put fifty-two thousand dollars in salaries non-exempt and reduce.
Six thirty-five by fifty thousand.
By a hundred thousand, because quite frankly, what, what we've heard is we've paid two hundred thousand. We'll save money, so we won't be at the four hundred, right, so go ahead and move six thirty-five down to five hundred thousand. Alright, and then just add the fifty-two thousand up in, don't go from four to six, go to, go to five hundred, and then put the fifty thousand into the number, you know what I'm saying, Steve?
Salary and benefits would be that, I'll move it around.
Six, six to five thousand?
Yeah, to five hundred thousand.
To five hundred thousand.
I'm saying. And just put it in, if we don't get it, parts, we still need to do it anyway.
And then what Steve is saying, even like, I got enough in my budget now to cover even bumping the other guy up that's gonna train on the freight.
Other personnel.
If the council approves, if we just wanna make this. Okay, appreciate that. Wha- wha- what's the next item? I mean, there's the next budget, thank you, Mike. Sanitation?
That is, uh, sanitation is one oh six and eighty-six.
And Steve, from that conversation that me and you had earlier about the trash cans, do you, do you think that, that that should probably stay where it is, even though it may go to a better trash can?
Yeah, because you won't have to be replaced in this manner. I, you know, I've been, I talked to somebody, let, let, clarify this for me. If we are getting bids or quotes, I should say, on outside services for garbage and trash, is that correct?
No, it's just trash. It's trash.
Okay, I talked to vendors this morning, you know, where Hilton got, is getting that truck from, they run sand garbage trucks. They replace them every five years because they have five-year warranty on them, and they sold their last five trucks for more, enough money to buy five new trucks and have a little money left over, but she told me where she gets her cans. She said it costs a little more, but she said they hold up a lot longer than the vendor we're using right now, so that's where we go on can quotes. You know, isn't that gonna go out on a six-month bid?
It hasn't been, who leaves the vendor?
I think it's a cascade, maybe, I'll call her back. Yeah, cause right now, you got a, from what used to be totes or something like that.
Yeah, because the other quote.
I'm gonna call back and tell her, you know, she's giving me a quote, I might have to call her off the quote though, because it's filled with trash. The can's a big deal, but she was gonna give, give me a quote on garbage, you know, they'd have to do so much stuff, we don't want garbage anyway, so. And she's a good lady to work with, that's all I got so far.
So now, uh, where are we with, uh, personnel services? I see there's an increase in, uh, let's talk about that.
That's just doing all the slots.
Okay, so we're gonna fill all the slots.
Doing all the slots, that's what happened in there.
And then supplies, it's mostly a wash.
And now, we got the increases of landfill fees, it's up another hundred and fifty. Let me see where we are right now, landfill. Six thirty-four.
Well, Steve is looking at that, whatever, you know, the guy that we brought in in public works that talked about having the, the area where we would take all of the, the burnable debris.
Oh, yeah, whatever.
I had, he was supposed to be getting to our office because he was permitted, and I know he was in Greenwood, and I mean, that was something that would reduce the landfill. Yes, he's, he said that you could take. Yeah, what he does is, he, he gives his permit for where you dump the stuff at, and he comes in once, well, he comes in twice a year. So he burned what he burned, and then, you know, I think he said you reduce six trucks down to one, you know, from what he's actually burning, and then you're, you're prolonging from paying every month those, some of those landfill fees to paying it once every six months. He would have to have his own location, he, you know, when he came to the meeting, he had all of his, uh, uh, Burley asked him a lot of few questions, and he was in line with everything he talked about. And then Mr. Burley was familiar with every, all of the people that he was, that was backing him, and he felt good about it.
You may miss it all, we can get the Darren Burley again and bring him back and see if we don't realize the savings on landfill if we were to do it.
Yeah.
Uh, but we need to just look at.
We're already at seven hundred fifty thousand in nine months, that's why we budget a million dollars in the lineup, if we keep going, if we are.
That could level us out to seven fifty, but they could everywhere, if it does, but what, what, you know.
If we're on the same portion of this million dollars.
But, and we don't, and, and, and we don't do something about the, the illegal dumping, we're gonna be able to make it off. That's, 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 that depends on what we do about illegal dumping. If we don't, we're gonna be able to make it off, cause how much is the, is that, is that going, you put that, do you put that with, just those are the tires too?
The tires come out. Yeah, tires come out of there.
Challenge I have on illegal dumping issue is your people identify what's illegal, picking up what they're supposed to pick up.
Well, what, what's, what's been happening lately is with three code enforcers and with the sanitation supervisor, if there's any kind of piles with construction material, um, or, or vacant house where landlord has cleaned it out, they're going around and they're marking it. And so when those guys make it to a marked pile, they skip it. And, and, and.
You're gonna insert something right there, Jermaine, except the one of y'all called up and felt they had to pick it up anyway.
But that's true too, but that, yeah, but other than that, they leave it.
That's the problem.
But they, they, they'll leave it unless, you know, we get a call that says, pick it up now. Ms. Williams.
And the, 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 the reality and practicality is the pressure that the council gets with folks saying this is right here, and the time it takes for the XP bar to go to court, to do our bit, you get about thirty callers in a week from everybody on this street, and then the council gets the pressure to go in.
Okay, then to the constituents. I mean, I've been with Jermaine before when he gets these calls.
Well, you know, everybody knows, everybody knows, everybody knows what to say. And so when you go out and you talk to them about it, they say that the homeowner is gonna tell you that he tore his storage room down in the back because it was falling down, and that's the story on that. It's to the point now, I dealt with one, I dealt with one, I dealt with one, uh, last week. Well, I know the tree cutter, and the lady said that the tree cutter cut it down for her because she was ill. And he piled it up at her house. She knew to say that she didn't pay him because she knows she say she paid him, we can't pick it up. And I know he cut it for free, you know, I know that, and none of them going out there doing no free work. But that's, that's what you run into on it, but, but the ones that the code enforcers or sanitation supervisors, we notice you're painting with a X unless something changes. Now, Ms. Williams had it where she was gonna do an amendment to the, to the track, the, the ordinance that you all passed. Because my concern on it was, after it sits there so long, at some point, we gonna still have to get it. And she's trying to get, wants to get an amendment where you could then assess it.
We talked about it in the last, it's, it's still working, I know it's going slow, but they really didn't need, they, they helped in meetings, so we count.
I agree with that, I mean, I understand the challenge. I just don't know, if your guy, if your driver pull up to a spot and if they have the ability or if you give them the authority to say, this one we ain't supposed to pick up. Even if they ain't got it.
They will call you, yes, they will call, I mean.
In fairness to some of us, I've gotten over the last three weeks, called the rest of us, you know, they just wanna do the right thing because they, well, what I got to do, I said, you gotta get it up, but, well, I don't want them to find me. And then they will go ahead and call somebody to get it, to get it up, because they wanna do the right thing.
And then in fairness, another thing that we're dealing with, and this on us, what we are having is, you have, it's taking two or three weeks to get back to a street. So if you, if it's taking you that long to do it, if a homeowner puts out two cubic yards this week, and they put out two cubic yards next week, I still have to pick it up because they allow two cubic yards a, a week. So some of those large piles that we see out there, you know, that we, you have to take that into consideration, and we're working through that until hopefully that goes away.
Plus, there's a traction out of their bill.
Yeah. So they are, and they, 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 they're okay to put out two cubic yards a week.
I don't think we do enough, it's not enough to be able to, to inform the constituents of what they're doing and how they're doing it, and what it costs us. We don't, we don't do enough, that should do a lot of damage to our, that take up, that take back over the community. They'll do, and then one thing about it, one thing about it, he gets on my nerves, and I, I hope that we don't never come, I hope we don't never get one like that, we got one like that sometime. I hope you don't never get like that. We go, we don't do enough appetizing to let the community know what it costs us for this illegal dumping and all this other stuff. We, we need, we need something.
That's why you gotta budget a million dollars in that lineup. Cause you get all this crap.
Well, I know when the code enforcers do it, they leave a care premises there where they mark them at that particular address and let that homeowner know why they are not, why it's being marked. They're supposed to, if it's something that they have in front of their residence, that they're not supposed to, they're supposed to take it to a fortified landfill. And if it's marked, they're supposed to be able to prove what they took, so that they won't be able to just go and go.
In that announcement, we need to put in there those land things and addresses on those.
But we really need to, and I hope that you're working on something like that, we really need to, we need this commercial, we need some education on what we doing, how we doing.
Well, I, my website line is, I've been pushing Brina to, for us to adjust and get a new billing system. And she says she thinks that we, that's the company that we're with now, maybe to go to a eight and a half by eleven sheet, that we can put messages on.
On that, right, we've been on that.
I wanna say, if you put a message on every bill, you're gonna lose some people. It's only when you need a message. Instead of just.
We definitely need that message.
I don't know, I think we have a, we have a city message every month on that, you know, we, we put things on there like, you know, we have a July fourth fireworks, we have, you know, city message.
If it's something different.
Yeah, not, not the same message.
We telling you something.
One thing about too is that every year when Amelia has to put in the favor of the solid waste report, the sanitation fund is upside down because we continue to buy equipment and don't, and don't figure out a way to pay for it. So right now, I mean, sanitation is upside down again. Last year, I put over a million dollars in funds from other sources, and we're still a million dollars upside down because we got all this stuff historically that we do, don't have to pay for.
And you've had so many breakdowns with our.
Yeah, Milton keeps up with those, and see, even like with the garbage trucks, what you don't see with the garbage trucks is on some, we, we do have an older truck that we time to time have to use as a spare truck. All of those trucks have pressure on them, you know, when they pick up a can and they dump them. Some people call in and say that the garbage truck driver is slamming the can to the ground, but he's not. The truck is, you know, on those older trucks that we're pressured into using, so they don't always lay a can down nicely. And then that increases the, the can budget because. Some of that comes because it's an older truck, you know, either you can set it to, they can, the shop can either set it to grab their can, or if they don't set it to grab the can, it's gonna either grab the two titles, two, you know, it's because it's an older truck. And so it does have other effects on down the line, not just so much of, you know, just can't get the parts for what it may, it does other damage.
Alright, so what else with this line, this, 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 this department?
Up in landfill, see, see, this is why your outside services are up.
So let's, let's go to landfill, when we go to landfill, outside services, let's reduce landfill about a hundred thousand with the hopes of talking to this guy about bringing stuff and see what they're playing with, look like, and then we need to come back to it, let's come back to it. Let's get Bill on the phone with them again and see, and then we can come back and see what, what it is, see if we can reduce that at least.
Because I, that guy, he was, he was, his prices per cubic yard, they were under a dollar per cubic yard. The guy that burns.
Do we have a consensus on that?
Yeah, remember me, uh, yeah, I can be of assistance, remember he asked. He asked us, remember, he wanted to know how much you were spending, and that's how he could do, so we need to get back, cause we. Say, okay, well, he thinking say was that, and then we can check his sources to ask Bill, does that make sense, and then we can come back and see what we can somewhat reasonably reduce.
I'm saying, since you know the figures on what we call, you free to call Hattie Bud. You free to call Hattie Bud, I'm sure, you free to call Hattie Bud, I'm serious, you free to call Hattie Bud and complain that you deserve and see how much they benefit.
Well, I know for a fact. I know he's in Greenwood, but I don't remember where all the.
What, what they spent, what they spent the last two or three years, and what they say, and bring that back to us, I mean, that's. Y'all thought I'd get seen somewhere through this.
You can delegate too, I may not do it, because you delegate too.
Can I beg you for one minute and ask a question? Because when we talked about water sewer repair and, and saw where you could pay for those changes in the budget, is there something that we gonna work toward? Yeah, I mean, cause I didn't hear, you know, we talked about it, but you know, for getting an operator that can operate a trench box and having a man that can. We, we saw where you could pay for it out of the already existing budget, but I just, I just wanted to know for myself.
I mean, I think, I think it wouldn't be going and put the money in there in case we do find somebody, and we'll find them right quick, does it go work? When we do a pump repair.
Okay.
Another big issue we have sanitation is, we've got eleven thousand trash and garbage stops, but we're not billing that many, so instead of having the revenue we're supposed to be getting, I mean, we, our revenue ought to be going up, and it's been coming down, and it looks like this next year's gonna be the same way, so the revenue side of this is really hurting too, because remember when you pay a bill, water gets paid first, sewer second, and then on a partial payment, there's a name left over, garbage gets paid, if not, garbage can get paid.
And then with the expenses of the breakdowns, being killed.
One month, I told you, remember last time, that we had forty thousand dollars in repairs just in sanitation out of Philly. One month, I told you, remember last time that we had forty thousand dollars in repairs just in sanitation out of police. I mean, you know, that was just, you know, that's. Excuse me. That done count a little crap you doing. Any other things besides a hundred thousand coming out?
That's all, I think. Until we talk to, uh, Bill and talk to this guy real quick and see what if anything we need to do.
So, uh, but. I don't, y'all talked about when I stepped out and I, you know, of course, we still talk about the possibility of looking at an outside provider. And this conversation, I don't know how they pulled together, so, uh, but.
We're trying to get companies, like I said, the person I talked to this morning, they only pick up ours, they won't pick up the trash. You know, and all these towns around here do everything internally. And the whole thing, if you go too far away, like I talked about late this morning, they're three hours away. Should we have to come to Grebel, have to find a spot, buy a spot, put up a shop, put a mechanic shop in and then start picking up stuff? So, I mean, if that type of capital outlay. I'll see what we get. We might not get too many favorable responses. Somebody have to remobilize and build here. That's all part. But I'm, I'm not through yet. I'm just still looking.
I'm also, this, this goes without saying, we're all saying the same thing, but it needs to be said comprehensively. We cannot continue to operate this trash like we've been operating. We cannot keep going two and three and four weeks. And longer without being able to pick up trash. It is a, it's blight on the community and it depresses the community. That we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. It, it, you know, creates multiple, multiple kinds of problems. So at some level, we can't talk about ordinances, following ordinances when we not picking up trash on some type of regular basis.
And they had like Charles Stack come in with BFI interested in pick up trash.
I've had two people.
She's had two people, I've heard.
And you know, I, I've got one with.
Okay, I was gonna say, if some of you may remember. Before we had a company that picked up trash on. We found out it was cheaper to do it in-house. That's when we transitioned to in-house. I do want to remind council, we have all of these outside contracts. When you cannot pay a claim stock, what happens to your contract?
So Ms. Wick, hey, hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Alright, can I comment on Ms. Wick's comment right there?
Yes.
I agree, I agree with you. If you look at the pure budget and just say, this is what, this is what we, we're gonna spend on dumping and what we spend on trash. If, if you're not factoring in what we have coming in all this equipment, okay? And we're not doing, we can't do it with broken down equipment, but we're making our whole town look terrible. Take the forty thousand that we just spent, we just spent seventy on the truck, start adding all that up and that truck's gonna break down in another five years. It's gonna be broken down. If you, if you put all them numbers together, I cannot believe. And back in the day, the town was a lot cleaner. Just be, be transparent with that. The town, the town was a lot cleaner because they're responsible, their equipment's up to date and they can pick it up. But, I mean, I'm like Al, we cannot continue doing what we're doing and, and just sit here every week. You got, three or four calls this morning, when are we gonna call by? I, I'm, I was calling Jermaine, I'm just, I'm asking Jermaine. Calling him all the time. Hey, when are you gonna get by Princeton? Hey, when are you gonna get by, uh, you know, all these neighborhoods? And, and, and. Factoring all the money and that's what I'm asking Steve to do is factor in what we're spending on maintenance of all these trucks. What we're spending on gasoline, not just what, what we're spending on dumping and picking up the trash. You gotta put it all together. I believe, I'll be shocked if it's not close to being the same. And if it's close to being the same, okay, then let's put it on somebody else's shoulders and it'll help Jermaine out do his other stuff better. So we don't have to keep working our, 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 we, we don't have to keep working on all these big old trucks that break down all the time. So that's my take on it.
What is, uh, you threw it up?
Yes, I'm done. Yeah.
What the, what did, uh, trash alone cover last year?
We don't break them down.
We don't look at sanitation. Sanitation is what you look at.
What do you ask, what do you question?
What do you, what's your question?
Put the trash alone, the breeze alone, what, what did they call it basically?
That's part of sanitation.
So you came somewhere there, you know, something. No, but what I can tell you is though, that fleet line item that we have like five hundred eighty-five thousand dollar budget in. That's what sanitation is costing you for fuel and repairs to make six hundred thousand dollars.
So that, that must have been a dollar, what they call it.
Garbage can.
Yes, that's, they're garbage and trash. So how much, how much was the tip of fee?
Tip of fee, you're gonna pay at least eight hundred fifty thousand, million dollars. But I'm saying that includes garbage.
But I guess you can, you can afford when we pay Kennedy Avery, because that's, that's basically where the, where the. Where the, where the tip, you know, the, the, the trash side goes to Kennedy Avery except for the tires.
I'm trying to, alright, so if, if, how much do we pay Kennedy?
Well, I think anybody that's.
Alright. They proposed, they proposed. I hope they're not.
Alright, Wilson, let's, let's, when, when, if we decide to put it out, then when people make their bids, whatever, we'll look at.
I don't want, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to. I, I, I know what the, I know what the proposed saving was. If we went with.
Well, let's look at all that at one time.
Yeah, I don't want.
We got somebody that get. Not, not here right now, but. Sometime I didn't know what company you're talking about.
That's a company that called me the other day and I can't, I don't want to say what the percentage of.
Just tell them, call Ms. Wick and then.
I don't want to say what.
They're gonna call me and say, you all have not authorized that.
And I, and I told them the other day, that word got out, somebody put it out to them. Somebody put that out, we had to go to meet last week. Somebody went and called and put that out. And, and I don't know why they did that, but like I told them, that's nothing that we consider right now. It wouldn't happen this year at all. And then we consider, we ain't, we ain't talking about. I don't know who put that out, but somebody put it out and they start calling.
But, but also to kind of go back to what Robert said, some on the, on the contractors, they're factoring in up their equipment. On ours, we just, we operating by what we have. And I mean, and, and we had a couple of council meetings ago, I reported that we had three trash trucks running. Well, by the end of the council meeting, we had one. And those are the problems. You may get three runners today, but that's no guarantee what's gonna happen two hours from now on sixteen year old truck.
Most places keep the trucks five years. And rotate.
Yeah, like the company that we bought this one, get this one from, they.
As soon as they got, they just got trucks.
So we're gonna put the budget where the budget is. Uh, if the council, and I think the council wants to put out the seed, the request for proposals regarding trash. And then the council can look at that and then make an informed decision at a time, but I think we got to put it out there. What we're trying to do, uh, is merge of points. What Wilson is saying, what Brock and, uh, uh, is saying, what Ross is saying as well. How do we get the community to be cleaned up and how do we, you know, how do we merge that balance with also what Ms. Wick is saying? Can we do it? But we would, you know, and the fact what I'm hearing from Ms. Wick is, when we did it in times past, we couldn't afford it. That's why we brought it in. So the question now is how do we solve this problem of replication, getting trash up? And I think the government determination, they want to put it out, it is, and see what it is.
And that's fine, but once we brought it in, we gonna pick it up every week. And we fix it up.
And during that time, that was sixteen years ago when you had new trucks.
And that's picking out garbage twice a week.
Yeah, but now you get, now those trucks that you were using when you were picking up on time are now sixteen years old.
And the problem.
And also, also, don't forget. Also, don't forget, it, it might cut down on some employees also that the other company can hire. Don't forget that with the furs and everything else that you'll probably drop two or three employees at that time.
Ms. Wick, I, I don't understand, if I understand what you say, that we can't afford it. I mean, it's basically apples and apples determine cost. So we're spending. Some X amount of money annually. And trash, employees, tipping fees, all that. And we're gonna analyze that. And then you say, you, you always say when we get, talk about this potential outside services, that we can't afford that. So I don't understand why you say that.
I say that because it's hard to make these claims, not necessarily personally, certainly. So much, if you look at, just stop and look at the claim stock, so much of that is unpractical.
Well, I mean, it's basically you can do it in-house, you can do it outside. The bunny is the bunny.
The one thing I think you're talking about, Al, what you always talk about is really instead of, what you're talking about the claim doctor. Because, simply as a day, we approve, claim doctor, they, we gotta pay it. And sometimes you have to lean weight.
Because when you, when it's in-house, you got some flex, cash flow.
And if it's done efficiently in-house, I think one of the reasons with, uh, part of the Wagner contract, which you said you couldn't find employee. To work for the city. So yes, let's look at it and compare it to. But if it's more efficient and effective to do it in-house.
Okay, but let me, let me.
I'm saying either way, whether it's in-house or.
I'm coming, Bill, hold on, Bill, I'm gonna be, let Ms. Wick finish and I'm gonna let you say some questions.
You all said get some proposals and find out if it's more fair, but we don't have that number yet. And that's what I'm saying, let's look at. But be careful about contracting out everything.
Well, I mean, obviously, we, we either got to, we just got to gear up our equipment and buy stuff and, and get them boys to do it in-house. Or we gotta.
That's exactly where I am with, with what you just said. Either, I mean, because I get the calls, the calls you get, the calls you all get, the cursing out that you get every day. I get it every day. And you know, and, and the people, they get tired of hearing me tell them that it's broke down, but if it's broke down, that's just the story. I mean, it is what it is.
I agree, Bill.
Bottom line, bottom line to me is this, okay? We're, we're putting a budget, we're, we, we budgeted last year. A certain amount of money and we're not, we're gonna check and see if it's close to the same. Look at the product you're getting. Hey, you can buy this house for a hundred thousand, but it's got holes in the wall and, and the windows are out. Or you can buy this house for a hundred fifty thousand and it's two times as big and it's gonna be clean and it's perfect. What I'm saying is, we're put, we got a number on a broken pig. Okay, we can't, we, whatever that number is, was a total disaster loser. Okay, so if it's two hundred thousand or, or three hundred thousand or, we're still going to get a better product. Because Jermaine's people, not Jermaine, they just are giving a broken down horse and they can't run with it. Unless we're gonna bump it up, like Al just said, make it a million, how much we're gonna spend and get the right stuff. We gotta evaluate the product, what we're getting, not how much it's gonna cost. Yes, we can find a way around all the costs, but you gotta have a product that you wanna live in, a town that's clean. Our town is not clean and we still spend the same amount of money or a little less than we're talking about the business. That's my point.
If you wanna live in a town that's clean, I agree, are you willing to pay the cost of that cleanliness? And pass it on to the.
That's it.
Are you gonna pass it on to the people?
Or are you just gonna pass? Well, then you can raise the price when everything's clean. You can raise it, but like Jermaine and I talk all the time, we can't raise somebody's garbage price right now. They, they would, they would burn my house down. But that's, that's my point. Yes, it might be a little more money, but we're gonna get a product that Jermaine don't have to worry about. And then we hold them responsible if they don't pick it up.
Alright, so I think we got it in the budget right now where we are doing in-house and then once we get it, then we can consider that. Uh, with proposals and, you know, go from there. So anything, the next one, uh, thank you, Bill, thank you everybody, thank you for explaining. Ms. Hawkes, you had something to say?
Yes, I just wanted to say I agree with.
Yes, ma'am. You agree with Ross?
Yeah, I agree with them, but find, trying to find somebody to outsource the trash, because it's causing a major problem for everybody.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you as well. Next, we can go to, uh.
Domain Shelter pays forty-five on the law. And thirty on the short one. One thing about Domain Shelter, it's a contractual obligation. Plus a few more dollars. The contract runs on forty-five at any thousand a year. And then you gotta pay the electricity and the gas, you know, a little bit of repairs on the buildings and stuff, but.
Jermaine, talk about the, the heating air, but we.
Okay, it was, it was, it was, they're finished with it. I went over yesterday. So we should be getting ready, they should be getting ready to invoice for that one. So that is done in the, uh, dollar, you know. Why they were total cost ended up there. You remember when they, what was it seventeen? It seems like it was seventeen something. It was seventeen, so.
I do want to remind council, this has been a five-year contract. This is the fifth year. It's currently out for bid. So I don't know if the bid will come in higher than where we're budgeted. Bids are due next month. So, um, yes, you should know before the end of budget session, how much that contract will be.
I love it, I love it.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, he's got, uh, Welcome Center, welcome stuff on page seventy-seven. If you go to the law one. On the Welcome Center, you know, historical, we spent. He put twenty grand in there just in case what he needs for the Welcome Center.
Man, you and I have talked several times about, it's our view of it. But the state kind of, every time we look around, they're coming in there, they're dictating, or wanting to tell us what needs to be done there. Right now, and we do have twenty in there, but right now, like the, the walkway to come into the Welcome Center. You know, just the way here, really, in my opinion, the wood needs to be, it just needs to be a concrete ramp. Which would be a lot cheaper than what the wood is. But that, that needs to be done. Um, some years ago, we, we did have Totten to go in and. He kind of raised up all of the trees out there to kind of clean it up. And there are little knickknack things that need to be done, like the decorative lights. Some of those have been knocked down over the years, over a few years. You know, if we're gonna actually go in and do that council.
So with the lighting, because we need the lighting.
And the handicap ramp, you know, we have signs of, but you know, you constantly get calls that this person failed or this person failed because of the, the way that it was. So that does, I just, just to have that, just to consider that, because those are some repairs that you have to do. And Steve, remind me from.
I think it'd be the Welcome Center. I think it'd be the Welcome Center, and the Welcome Center would consist of part of tramination. And I think, uh, I think condition someone probably found it a few dollars, but with them in there now.
We probably spent like six grand for the, this air conditioning stuff. That's gonna put you on twenty-four on a thirty thousand budget, but you're not gonna have an air conditioner next year. But also in this fund, you also do the buildings that the city owns. So we spent eighty-seven thousand there, because we have other buildings we gotta maintain besides the Welcome Center.
And all of them, all of them are kind of migrating over to, to meet the kind of fleet when they have a problem, they also, you know. Steve pointed out to me the other day that, that some of them, they called me, do have line items that even if they call me to write them out a little bit. All of them started.
So in that line, I can see we got.
We did put twenty grand in the Welcome Center.
That's Welcome Center included. Um, it's from what we've, me and Ronnie have got a couple of prices over on that. It costs roughly about ten thousand to fix the walkway. That would be ten, the other one down, building it up in, in country.
I think we moved twenty, about forty thousand.
And then we, we spent fifty-three thousand on so far, on this other building around the city.
I think Welcome Center, you move the forty thousand, give in some other stuff, the lighting area, in the area where, where it was, where it may be dark for that contact. Like you may, we could do some other things.
You know, the back section of it, we have security lights through the end of it. But on the front part of it is when you have the pole, decorative pole lights, and that's what kind of light up the front of the Welcome Center. Not to mention it does need painting, you know, that type of stuff, so.
I think we need to separate. I think we need to separate the Welcome Center from the flood museum. And I think, being tramation on the highway, I think Commission Simmons would give us some help on the, on the Welcome Center. It's been fine, it's, it's, it's involved in tramation, it ran on the highway. I, I believe he'll, I believe he'll, he'll finance a few dollars, but we gotta separate them from.
Well, we haven't spent, but we separated, and we haven't spent much of the flooding there.
We don't, we, we can't, we can't mention the flood museum, it's down, but the Welcome Center, we can, we can, we got the license, I mean, speaking around that. He may, you know, he may send the, he may send the, the state flu in that coming in, they gotta help us keep it clean here, you know?
I mean, I can just do what you can ask for and get it.
Yeah, most of your, most of your Welcome Center is on the highway, the state take them anyway.
So, we can do, uh, it's a Mississippi page for the staff, and we pay for the building.
And Wesley has helped out some, you know, when there's different projects there, me and him may go together on it and kind of get them done, but those were just some of those things that I know that need to be done, those are some of the calls, their safety personnel came down, and that's who made the notation about the handicap ramp.
How much you wanna put the flood museum in, anything, or a little bit?
A little bit, no more than five thousand, if anything.
And then for the Welcome, we got twenty thousand, what you saying was basically?
What do you, you said?
We don't have to spend it, but just put it in there.
But just keep them separated, though, and that, that brings us, that brings us a conversation with it, if you're gonna do it, I'm gonna do it, somebody.
Flood museum should be fine if nothing happens.
Now we need, now we take, now we're putting the bypass in, so we need something to draw the people to the, to the Welcome Center, to come through and look at the Welcome Center. That was on that, that was good, we keep some of the traffic coming through.
So what other items?
He's through, he'll do it, Jermaine, let you go, let you want to beat him up a little bit.
I'll be fine, let, let you in the airport, come on, Shitin.
Airport is sixty, pretty long, two point three short.
Good morning, how you doing, Shantina?
Good morning. Good morning. So, for airport, this is my first time, uh, everything looks like it's gonna stay the same, I am requesting, uh, overtime for uh, the maintenance guys to be added back. Uh, we are still struggling with equipment, uh, we're still struggling with trying to find staff to, uh, work at the airport. I didn't put it on the sheet, but I kind of need some additional costs, if it's necessary, in fleet, because right now I don't have a, a maintenance supervisor, and uh, with us constantly running that old equipment that we have, we did get some new stuff, uh, we take everything down to Mr. Davenport. So, fleet is, right now, we've got three tractors, I mean, two tractors down, we got two more. We need, I do need equipment, we got two tractors running at over, almost two thousand acres, and that, and we're wearing those tractors out.
Did we ever get a new truck in?
We, we just ordered one.
The one that we paid for, the fact that Bush Hall we ordered?
Yeah. Yeah, we just got that one, and Bush Hall, that it came. We ordered another Bush Hall, so I wanted to get with Miss Weeks and Mr. Davenport, I don't think, Mr. Washington ordered a twenty-six footer, and I would rather let Mr. Davenport help me to get the equipment ordered, because he know what his staff will work on, that thing came like a spaceship, it was really, really big, and then we had to send it back, because they sent a huge piece of equipment that we, so, we definitely need equipment, um.
But quickly for you, when we talk about, I don't have. Yeah, I have, I have problems adding two costs to airport.
We sent forty-eight thousand in their plate line out right now, so they go.
If she was covered, you think she asked for more than anything?
Well, I just, she's very helpful, when I bring it down, I didn't want us to be studied, okay, here, here this is, and you don't have the money for it.
Yeah.
Because I, I didn't know how that, that happened, uh.
So you need a main, you need a main man for basic haul, haul engine and, and the tractor, the main, the, basically, main is what?
So to be honest with you, I don't really need nobody out there pointing fingers, I need everybody on the boards, I need everybody to work.
I, but I, you need a, a, a main man.
Not really.
What you just said, you did?
No, I was saying.
I mean, what I'm saying, what was Jane doing?
Jane was a maintenance supervisor.
Did you do it or what? So, if somebody said that, no.
Yes, sir, he, he did work.
Did you know how to work on tractors and lumber?
He, he did some of the work.
So if you had somebody that know how to work on trucks, do something with, on trucks and lumber, would that help you?
She needs somebody to help.
Yeah, it would help, it would help, Mr. Wilson.
That's what I'm saying.
It'd help if, if, if you got somebody who's gonna do it.
That's what I'm saying.
So we're saying the same thing, where I say.
What I'm knowing, what I'm saying now, I know in that Milton can't get to this stuff like, he showed in, and he can't get to, I, I, I'm trying to get him to call this man. He can't get to it like, like he needs to, and then then your stuff gonna be sitting down, because he can't get to, not that he don't want to, but he can't. You can't just put everything on Milton, if we provide somebody that can, that's, that's qualified, certified to do this stuff. The best, I have a mind that maybe would, uh, maybe would consider, you know, but if you don't want nobody else.
It is, it is not that I want you to, to get me wrong, I just rather for people, so we did have Jane, Jane was a good asset to the airport, but if Jane was in Greenville more than he was at the airport, I don't have time for that.
I understand, I seen that, I saw that.
Yeah, we need people working, just pointing fingers and stuff, we, it's a lot out there, it's a lot out there, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, yeah, you got to.
You need a working maintenance.
You got a steel brick, you got a, a blade, you need shop on your lumber, you gotta stop and send all that to the shop.
Not everything, they know how to do some stuff.
Is there a maintenance shop at the airport?
Yes. Yes, sir.
So what we'll do is, we'll give you that slot, then, if you get somebody that you know gonna be a working maintenance person, they can also work the tractor, give you that slot in your budget.
We already have that slot.
Okay.
So you don't have that.
And that's my position in the budget, so.
Uh, I think you gotta basically kind of saying the same thing, just the one we have.
I, 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 I don't put us on those, but when James, the one thing he says, he, that's what he said, he was, I can help out the airport, as long as I don't have to do the work that he makes. I mean, I like, I mean, I like saying that.
Yeah.
Don't worry about it. When I say, hey, but, but you know what, when I seen Colleen Gress, where he working at now? That he, he wasn't working, I wanna work, and then we, you know, when I, when I approached him about it, what he said, that he, he doing better now, he doing the, I know, I mean, ain't no way, no way, you making more money, and what you working there now, you what, he wanna do it. And I, and I, you know what, I said that a year ago, when he was, when he put in, and we helped him get in the, I said that a year ago, and I hate to say it, uh, excuse my friend, but when you come in with your irate stuff in, it just, I, I, I shouldn't be doing that, but it does to me.
Yes, I got it.
It just tells me something.
We understand, D K, we understand.
Yeah, just, just tells me something.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, so right now, we got that slot. Okay, yeah, so, we got, and the three costs, just in case, if you got budget, in case something go down, with the forty-eight. So you got it in there.
Okay.
What else you got?
Uh, H back and TSA, we've been getting a lot, a lot of complaints with TSA, so, um, I talked with Kevin Hughes today, and he said that, uh, the bubble, that we just need to talk to our senator and, and give them, because they, people have a problem TSA staff putting their hands in their people's bags and luggage and stuff, so even different areas and different people around town, I know you've heard the complaints before, but TSA is, they, they're doing it the old-fashioned way. Every airport has been upgraded, Greenville's the last to be upgraded in TSA area.
Yeah, we need to upgrade, we need to.
Idiots, I know it has problems, I know.
They're making equipment up, but it may be something, maybe some opportunity today.
Everything on the next side was some high, so, yeah, that's why everything they send me, I send it to you, and you'll say, I'm trying to think of that, that's a lot, so.
The five hundred thousand that we got, are we getting that equipment necessary, or we can talk about it, oh, super, he wants, the first five hundred is what the council is gonna agree to, eligible expenses, so then they can just go ahead and cut us a check for that. The other money is gonna be effectively, actually became effective July one, but we got time.
That's my understanding, they're not gonna cut, they're paying invoices. With your approval, I've started to send them invoices, the H back back, running temporarily, first time, we went all the way out. So, I've been communicating as well with Miss Weeks on that, so I've sent them the last bill, that was like seven thousand, so. And then Miss Weeks said one of them, they're paying, so it's like five thousand now.
So we are doing that, I just wanna make sure we using that money.
It's going to the town, but that big project in terms of replacing the entire HVAC system, of course, that has to be bid out of those specs, I believe the engineers, Jermaine were conversing on that.
Sounds good, so there's work, Captain, the one that y'all, yeah, the, that, mine through Senator Simmons, uh, is working. There is some more money that's coming, so this last fiscal year, that's why I was just saying, let's make sure we spend that, so then we can go ahead and see what we're gonna do with the other money that has come.
Can they possibly buy that new evaluation equipment?
One thing I need to bring your attention, May first, the Leo grant went away, so when police go out to the airport, there's no grant to reimburse it, so.
Seven one, stand for.
No, I didn't. But somebody's gotta, you know, eat that cost now that it's not grant code, so, I mean, are they going out there to the police department, or are they going out there for the airport? I mean, is that the airport, for the airport, but I'm saying that's not grant funded anymore, so.
What was that amount that we normally spent per year, because they have to be out there with the plane needs and like?
Yeah, they, that amount, it was running about, uh, I was enrolling them about fifteen hundred dollars a month. So, police is, is taking care of it now, I sent it to Katrina, so she really, so she sent it back to me, and I'm like, okay, so is it airport or police?
This is what the council put it, so that's about, what, forty thousand dollars?
Well, fifteen, that'd be, eighteen hundred times twelve would be thirty thousand something. I'm just saying, it's okay that the place hates it, I'm just saying, y'all need to wear, you know, connect grant money, leave your money back.
So we need to put that thirty thousand, I say, it's the airport function, we need to put that thirty thousand into the airport budget.
It's been paid, I think, out of police, because it's their office, it's while they are on duty, so it's been charged to their favor.
Okay, so who's there?
Yes, and I think, what he didn't say was, the reason is, it was not reauthorized on the federal level. That's why the grant stopped, it's not a lack of something the city.
There is some other stuff, Miss Weeks, that they're saying may not be reauthorized as well, with some things, and it's just a lot of things that may not be reauthorized. Uh, I was speaking, uh, with the Eastern Air Service Program, uh, and speaking with Senator Whitaker and Cindy Haskey, she sits on aviation, uh, but Matt called, two below, and all of us to call regarding, uh, the funding regarding any central service, but it wasn't brought up, so they text back and said they didn't think it was gonna be an issue this year, but it's coming back up, and so I'm just saying, it's coming back up, but we were just, in a week's time, we called trying to make sure that that money stayed, uh, but, uh, we don't know where it may end up, we're, we're airport, so, you know, but they, Senator's office said it's one of the issues this year, so.
Keep in mind, September thirty twenty-five, during this new fiscal year, you got a million seventy-two thousand dollars in bond payments that the airport's responsible for.
We'll discuss that, Captain, yes.
I was gonna wait to miss Smith finish an hour.
Oh, that was, that's it, I just need some overtime, because, uh, I didn't put in there a lot, but Mr. Washington took it out and gave the guys raises and stuff, they kind of okay with where they are now, uh, because I got some longstanding guys that's been out there for a while, I definitely, sometimes, you know, Jermaine and Ronnie has been, uh, out there with me every week, dealing with holes, we, you know, the guy went in a hole, he's still, new guy just hired two weeks ago, he's out hurt. Uh, the holes are, is deeper than this area, he, it's, it's really a lot of holes, I sent emails to the mayor and airport committee. Uh, I went out the other day, because TSA's whole Jackson staff is here, we gotta have a briefing on tomorrow, and I, and I gotta deal with these people with no air, so, um, that process with the HVAC. The bottom floor does not have air, contour has air, they, Boland is came and, and rigged it up, so they can have air now, but the units went, uh, they're going out, so even my office, we, I don't have air.
Is this an overtime thing, or is it a contact on the bay?
It's overtime, they used to have overtime, but I think at one point, Mr. Washington had done only part-time.
Yeah.
And that kind of lost it, but it should, is there not anything on that line right now?
No.
Then that was when it came out, I guess.
We can wait and hold it here, six thousand dollars.
Okay.
I got six thousand dollars. For the new budget, is that gonna cover you?
I hope, it's just summer, but in the winter, there, I don't need, it's just summer months.
So, what do you, what do you think, honestly?
Yeah, I'm arguing team.
Now, consensus, it's no one else is talking. The mayor doesn't have time to say so, you know?
My question is concerning an airport director. And Rod just left out, but there's got to be a lot of emphasis placed on trying to search and find someone. We, and thank you so much, Shantina, for what you've been doing, but you've got to have someone with those certifications, who knows all of the technical airport detail, so I guess my question is, do we have any?
What's that?
Airport director, do we have any application for?
Information to your guy over here at, at the economic, uh, license.
I am, I just been arguing with you this week, please.
I've said, uh, said it also to, uh, Kevin Williams, uh, in the, he's posting it, he's helping us post it, well.
We made a post, but then they also talked about, uh, going back to, you know, contracting and trying to do, which we don't need to do, like you're saying, Miss Weeks, uh, but that proposal was couched as well, uh, but like you say, if you work in these airports, what deputy airport director, someone who in these airports wanna move up to them, so we've put that out there, we've had those.
Right, right, I just know it's incredible hardship, um, Shantina.
And we thank you, publicly, we thank you.
You gonna pay me? I got some, nobody never asked, but I have some. Thank you, guys. Okay, well, I hope.
Jackson just had a, a female, uh, uh, director, uh, and Jackson just had a, had a female director. No, no, Washington, not director. Is that you? I mean, I, I thought I saw that, it, it, no, no.
Females go for aviation too, so I.
That's what I'm saying, she came from somewhere, I'm for sure.
Everybody comes from somewhere.
Yeah, Mr. Washington left in November of last year. Yeah, Mr. Washington left in November of last year, so it, it is kind of, uh, a little shaky. I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot. Uh, the FAA, you have to, uh, Ms. Weeks, to, I, and I don't wanna not discredit the airport committee, but I know that. Ms. Weeks has really helped me with stuff in the past, that I, if I call her, she gonna give me an answer for ten minutes. And she's, I know she used to be out there, but it is a lot, and it's just, and then you get it with staff, you get it with payroll, so all that stuff is started going on. And we, we've been getting along. The airport is looking good, and we definitely need a director, and I appreciate everything you have done and, and is planning to do for the airport.
Thank you, Mrs.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, yes.
HR.
HR.
Seventeen on the long, nine on the short. One page. Wasn't, wasn't alone. Seventeen on the long.
Hey, hey, what kind of food you get?
We got Subway, we got Subway, we got sandwiches, drinks, Coke, Sprite, Red Ray. Come on, I brought it for y'all.
Sips. I'm gonna eat yours, Bill. Don't worry about it.
Only people get salads.
Jake can eat five. Jake can eat five regardless of what he's probably.
I just wonder where he's gonna birth that baby. I see what I can do, Bill.
So really, with Ron's department, is, is, he's, he's really leveled to the point where it's less.
Yeah.
But I know you, you're gonna have some coming in payroll. I mean, how many personnel?
Right, we have some coming personnel. Uh, one thing I want you guys also, just take a look at, I mean, uh, pretty much everything. Kind of the same, just kind of put some stuff back in that was taken out, uh, based on, uh, the end of the year pickup we had, uh, and, uh, with our finances, but. Uh, one of the things, a couple of things I need you guys to, to watch out for, and one is purrs. Uh, we did have an increase in purrs this year. So across the board, everybody.
An increase and we have a decrease.
Yeah, so. That, you know, we're gonna continue to look out for, and, uh, I will, I've spoken with our insurance companies. We've had a couple of really, really big hits, uh, well, actually three really big hits, uh, over the last, uh, six months or so. So, uh, we will be looking at an increase from the insurance company this year.
We put it in. You were here wrong.
We put the increase. And that's, that's about, that's about what we're getting, in order to, to fifteen percent increase. Okay, uh, that's, uh, that's it. So on personnel side, but if y'all, you know, we find some money for Ron. Uh, not, I might be allowing you some aviation.
In terms of your chronos, how, like?
Yeah, uh, now, we did mention that earlier, we do, uh, right now, uh, we're, we're, we're still, uh, hanging on about three of chronos. Keith and I, uh, has talked on a couple of occasions, uh, we've really just got to sit down and nail down what we're gonna do with our timekeeping system. Chronos, uh, somewhere around the end of the year, the first of next, or next quarter, first quarter of next year. Uh, everything that we have from then will be obsolete. So, uh, in order to, uh, continue with it, they're talking about a forty-five thousand dollar upgrade. And I know if I can't get a couple thousand, I know we're not gonna pay forty-five thousand dollars. So, but we do have, uh, we have talked to Paylos, we pay Core, uh, another couple of groups. And we're only looking at a timekeeping system. So the systems that we've looked at, the ones that I've talked to them about currently. On, uh, it's not really set on a, uh, annual basis, but we'll set it up that way where we can get a full number. But, uh, it's a monthly, uh, we pay by month, we pay for the clocks, uh, and we'll pay for administrative fees. And, uh, their software and setting it up. So probably a one time, every year costs was setting up. But after that, uh, the monthly fee will go down, and according to Keith and I both have looked at it. They, uh, will, will actually spend less than what we're paying for chronos over the course of, of the year.
So I guess what Ms. Weeks is getting in, I'm gonna go to you. If you wanna know what, anything we need to budget, if we're gonna get a new system, what that looks like.
Whatever type of management.
Yeah, so I would say budget, uh, I would, right now, I think we have budgeted for timekeeping about seven, six, seven thousand dollars.
They don't have the maintenance contract.
The maintenance contract is about six, what, about six or seven?
We got eight thousand for that.
We got eight thousand for maintenance contract.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's it.
And software maintenance, we got fifteen thousand.
And that should, that should be enough. That should be enough. I don't think.
I was gonna go ahead and put eight, move that eight to ten.
Oh, you can do that.
Or twelve or five, but then if we go down that way, if there's a setup fee or anything.
Nah, that's, that's.
You know, that may be, but then if you don't use it based on what you're saying, Keith is saying, it may be less, but less. Overstate expenses and understate revenue.
Absolutely.
That's what we need to do then. So I would like to put in that maintenance contract, twelve or five. If it's okay, counsel.
Twelve or five.
Twelve or five.
From eight dollars, I guess twelve or five, yes. Yes, ma'am. As we said, Ms. Weeks, I did want to talk about, uh, I know on the, the chart, we talked about outside, uh, community departments.
It's that everybody's desk, with you, Cal.
Yes, ma'am.
Now.
It's on my phone and went out. I was trying to write a message. It won't come back on. They, they need me there, call me. They, they need me there, call me. What you was hauling about there? You was saying something about something.
All right. Can I?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Also, so, uh, last year, Mr. Washington, when the fire department was, uh, given to, uh, Chief Brown. He, so now they're, they need training, they, you know, he's getting additional guys out due to G cam coming to do four fifty. So the stuff, the training, all the training that they want done, I don't have it in the budget. And his budget is low for training because of the staff that we have. Mr. Washington will go to this conference or that conference, but now, um, Chief Brown is requesting for the guys to take additional training. He wants to send like nine guys. So Ronnie Curran said that when he come on board with the planes and everything. He's gonna need all of these guys out there working and serve that.
We, we can put a tr- training underneath the airport fire department. We just need a number.
Five thousand.
I just pulled up his head.
Yeah, they, they just.
They gotta go.
Twelve thousand and thousand.
So I have no problem with putting a thousand five hundred in, uh, traffic.
For the airport, you wanted to.
It's gonna go in your budget. It's, it's going under you.
Well, I put underneath the airport fire department.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's had to set for fun.
Okay, all of the training had previously been under one oh two.
We're gonna take it out of one oh two and put it one oh one.
Whether it was for maintenance or fire, so now you're putting all of their training.
I'll put all twelve five into one oh one airport.
All fire.
All fire department. I'm leaving what she has and putting twelve five under fun one oh one, which is airport.
That's easy.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Okay, do you get most of the job?
Salute.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the work, man.
Thanks for the hard work.
Yeah, yeah. There you are. And drinks right here.
Drink here, Bill. I just know I better get in front of a mayor, you don't have anything left.
Thank you, y'all. Here we go. Thank you. Yeah, go to work. And Ms. Weeks, I got sneakers over there.
Oh, my gosh.